It's not the public that's over there, which is all in the process. Um, I guess because we have that distrust, um, because to be able to help that problem to happen, so there's that distrust because even though, um, like, um, it's hard. Like people, you know, they're, um, officers and all this stuff. But we should, um, it might sound intimidating. If you do it, I'm sure. It's ridiculous. So I heard a story today, um, about one of these things where it often comes through our way with similar style.
Hello, Rick.
We're up in the front.
Hello.
Tracy said you have that service award.
I don't have it.
Uh-uh. I don't think they give it to anybody.
Tracy said she did. Maybe Cruz has it.
I think Cruz does.
Um, I think that we need to break this down because the convention, um, everybody will find it difficult.
He wants you to get the assignment sheets, copies of the assignment sheets as well.
Yeah, see, I just created it. I just created it. One of them. Yeah, I separated it to make more copies.
It would be great. That's what I'm saying. I mean, he's your daughter. I mean, you think you are, maybe somehow that you gave someone picked him up in a bus or something.
How are you?
But like, that's just a thought. So I'm, I'm thinking it's probably a heartbeat. Just I'm just worried.
Except for, uh, Rep. Hernandez and his other guys. Everybody else is scheduled to be.
You're not gonna have any issues here. I brought my brother.
Yeah, see. I don't know.
Thank you. If we can rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag which stands on the nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Pearn?
Yes, sir. That brings us to item number one on the agenda, and this is discussion and action to approve, I'm sorry, before we begin with item one, we do have a proclamation this evening, and it's for the Borderland Mountain Bike Association Day.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
No, no problem. Very happy media here to witness this historic event. Um, proclamation by the city of El Paso, Texas. Whereas the Borderland Mountain Bike Association, BIMBA, has served the community for promoting mountain biking, preserving open spaces, maintaining trails in West Texas and Southern New Mexico for over fifteen years through its founders and community members. And whereas BIMBA was founded in the nineteen nineties to promote wellness and to create and to create, enhance, and preserve great trail riding experiences for mountain bikers in West Texas and Southern New Mexico, and for the creation of a bicycle-friendly community through cycling awareness, safe, safety advocacy, and the promotion of riding for fun, fitness, and transportation. And whereas BIMBA has promoted the fantastic outdoor experiences that the Franklin Mountains have to offer via the annual Puzzler Mountain Bike Race and through other races hosted in our mountains. And whereas the two thousand and twenty-three El Paso Puzzler Mountain Bike Race will take place on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and will draw competitors from predominantly Texas, New Mexico, and Chihuahua, Mexico. And whereas the El Paso Puzzler Mountain Bike Race will showcase the Franklin Mountains on three different courses of fifteen, thirty-five, and fifty miles. And whereas BIMBA has contributed to the quality of life R C by raising funds and investing those funds to improve trails, trailheads, and to expand open space in West Texas and Southern New Mexico. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of El Paso December twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-two, shall ever be known as Borderland Mountain Bike Association Day. And I would like to say if there's anybody who would like to come up and speak, that if it wasn't for groups like the Borderland Mountain Bike Association, our community would be a lot of a fun less and beautiful place to live. And specifically wanted to shout out, um, the hard work that the Borderland Mountain Bike Association did in saving lost dog, um, preserving over eleven hundred acres in perpetuity, and have worked on countless other initiatives as well. I don't know if there's anyone in their mustard and navy blue spandex Lycra tops that would like to say a few words. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
I'd like to thank you all for doing this for us.
Please, uh, please announce yourself, sir.
Yes, I'm Joe Garabey, uh, with the Borderland Mountain Bike Association, also the chair of the Open Space Advisory Board. And it's one of the things that we do is advocate for open space, advocate for trail advocacy, making sure things go well. We're working with the state park all the time to try to see what we can do to improve that process so we can get more tourism here. We're an organization that really is about the outdoors and making life better for El Passos in the outdoors so they can be more healthy and just enjoy the outdoors because that's one of the great things we have here in El Paso. So thank you again for doing this for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mary, would you like to take a picture real quick?
We'd have to recess the meeting. If, uh, it should be a very short meeting, we'll do it right after the next one.
Okay.
Ms. Pearn?
Sounds good.
Yes, sir. Item number one is discussion and action.
Oh, before, Ms., I'm sorry. Mr. Cortinas, I know that, um, you, you're gonna, um, thank, um, Representative Rodriguez for her service, but I, I want to thank Representative Rodriguez again for her service, not only representing District Six, but also representing our community. Thank you for all your hard work, and, uh, again, congratulations.
So just wanted to share a few words, so on behalf of the city of El Paso and the entire, uh, six thousand plus employees that you've represented over the last three years now, thank you for all you've done for the community, for District Six. Um, being a city council representative, I know is not an easy task. You all are faced with a lot of difficult challenges and, uh, difficult decisions that you're forced to make, but doing so during a pandemic, an immigration crisis, and everything that we've dealt with over the last three years while you've been in office has been even more of a challenge than you've done, uh, a lot to help not only District, but as the mayor said, for the entire community. So on behalf of the city of El Paso, we have a small token of appreciation for all you've done for the community over the last three years. So thank you, Representative Rodriguez.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Thank you so much. Honestly, it has been the honor of my life to be able to serve the city of El Paso. I have learned so much in the very short time that I was here. I don't know if I've been, uh, this is the shortest term that anybody has ever served, but if it is, I proudly wear that, that badge. Um, I accomplished a lot, a lot of the things that I set forth to do, I accomplished, um, getting money, securing money for this train depot, for Union Depot to get restored, it's gonna be restored in the next five years, um, saving buildings. Finally, I know that you all have an item in January third, um, meeting, and we're finally saving those buildings, and that I couldn't have been so, so more proud of what I accomplished there, right? Because that was my main mission, was to save those buildings, and by the grace of God, and by the decisions of this council, those buildings will be getting saved. Um, I wanna also thank the mayor for everything that you did. I know that I started ringing the alarm on, on this emergency declaration back in May, and I feel that the world needed to know the story of El Paso, the world needed to know what was going on here, and, and we got that attention, and El Paso deserves that attention. I also wanna thank all of the staff. You all are amazing, we have a great team, you guys are a great team of not only, um, service members, but you guys are a great team of educators. You all educate not only the council, but you all educate the public, and you do it knowing that it's not an easy thing to do, right? To have to educate the entire public of how a budget works, as an example. I'm very proud of all the work, I'm very proud of District Six. I love my community, I, I was born and raised in District Six, I have my children and my husband here, and I did this for them, and I know that they're very proud of me, and I know that when God closes one door, it's because he's gonna open another one, and one way or another, we will be back. So thank you all again.
Uh, Mr. Cortinas, would you wanna, you wanna present that to, uh, Representative Rodriguez?
Yes, sir. That brings us to item number one on the agenda, and this is discussion and action to approve a resolution to canvass the votes cast in the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two City of El Paso runoff election and declaring the results. And I'll read the resolution into the record, which says, "Resolution canvassing returns of the runoff election for the two thousand and twenty-two general election for districts one, six, and eight. Whereas the city council of the city of El Paso called for the two thousand and twenty-two runoff election to be held in said city on December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two to fill the terms of three district representatives from single-member districts numbers one, six, and eight for the terms as established by and in accordance with the charter of the city of El Paso. And whereas the election officers who held said election have duly made returns of the results thereof, and said returns have been duly delivered to said city council. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of El Paso that number one, that the city council officially finds and determines that said election was duly given, that proper notice of said election was duly given, that proper election officers were duly appointed prior to said election, that said election was duly held, that due returns of the results of said election have been duly made and delivered, that the election returns have properly been made out, and fully certified by the officers of said election in the different voting precincts of the city, and that the city council had duly canvassed and said returns, all in accordance with law and the resolution and amendments thereto calling said runoff election. Number two, that the city council officially finds and determines that the following votes were cast at said runoff election for the following officers by the resident qualified electors of said city who voted at the election. District one, Brian Kennedy, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two votes, Analisa Cordova Silverstein, one thousand three hundred and three votes. District six, Claudia Lizette Rodriguez, one thousand forty-five votes, Art Fierro, one thousand three hundred and sixty-two votes. District eight, Bettina Olivares, eight hundred and eighty-five votes, Chris Canales, one thousand five hundred and thirty-six votes. And number three, that in the case of the following offices, the following persons who receive more than a fifty percent majority of votes cast for candidates for such offices are hereby declared elected to such offices for the ensuing terms or until the election and qualification of their successors, subject to the proper issuance of certificates of election by the presiding officer, and that the number of votes cast for each person who has a candidate for such offices, according to the returns, is shown in paragraph two hereof. District representative number one, Brian Kennedy. District representative number six, Art Fierro. District representative number eight, Chris Canales. Number four, that on file in the city clerk's office and made a part hereof by reference our copies of the mechanical precinct tabulations of the votes cast at the runoff election for the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two runoff election to elect the district representative, districts one, six, and eight, showing the number of votes cast in each precinct for each candidate. Number five, that this resolution is adopted subject to the right of any candidate to contest such election in, in any way provided by law. Number six, that this resolution was acted upon in accordance with the law by the presiding officer, and that the city council, and was deemed by said city council that upon passage of the resolution, it shall take effect immediately. Number seven, this resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of the city council, and the city clerk shall record the amendment so adopted in the separate book kept in her office for such purpose, adopted this twenty-third day of December, two thousand and twenty-two. Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion made by Representative Rodriguez, seconded by Representative Molinar, to approve the resolution. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and the motion passes unanimously. Item number two is discussion and action on an emergency ordinance extending a disaster declaration due to a humanitarian security and economic crisis resulting from a mass migration through El Paso.
Move to approve.
Second.
Go ahead, Representative, um, Anello.
Thank you, mayor. I'm not sure if, um, Chief Rodriguez and Chief DeGastino are here to answer some questions. If there's anyone here to answer questions.
Chief Rodriguez.
Sorry, y'all, I didn't see you back there. Y'all, this is the slowest walk ever. No, I'm just kidding.
Good afternoon.
Hi, chief, thank you. Um, so there's been a lot of concern that I have and that I've heard from the community, um, and there are first some things that I think that we, I, I think y'all should be clearing up, right? And some misunderstandings. Um, I know that there has been a conversation going on in the public and by the NGOs, um, about a lot of, uh, individuals who have not been processed by CBP not being allowed to be, or who are, I guess, I don't know what the correct terminology is, so forgive me, but who are essentially not reimbursable by FEMA. Um, and so there are members of the public, and I think some members on the call who are under the impression that the city is not assisting them, uh, because we cannot get reimbursement from FEMA from those individuals. Uh, I've spoke to the Congresswoman, I've spoke to many other individuals, I know that's not true, but I wanna allow you all, um, the opportunity to kinda clear that up a little bit.
And, and I think that's important, because I can tell you that I've been every night working with the chief, and last night was a really hard night, as we knew that the weather was gonna be five degrees, you know, wind chill factor, and there'd been five degrees, and, uh, his efforts and the efforts of, I mean, after he gets done, I, I'll kinda go through some of the things we ended up doing last night, but, uh, it was really an incredible job to make sure that we took people off the street, chief.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll start off by talking about the difficulty of getting people off the Yes, sir. That brings us to item number one on the agenda, and this is discussion and action to approve a resolution to canvass the votes cast in the December 17, 2022 City of El Paso runoff election and declaring the results. And I'll read the resolution into the record, which says, "Resolution canvassing returns of the runoff election for the 2022 general election for districts 1, 6, and 8, whereas the city council of the City of El Paso called for the 2022 runoff election to be held in said city on December 17, 2022, to fill the terms of three district representatives from single-member districts numbers 1, 6, and 8 for the terms as established by and in accordance with the charter of the City of El Paso, and whereas the election officers who held said election have duly made returns of the results thereof, and said returns have been duly delivered to said city council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of El Paso that, number one, that the city council officially finds and determines that said election was duly given, that proper notice of said election was duly given, that proper election officers were duly appointed prior to said election, that said election was duly held, that due returns of the results of said election have been duly made and delivered, that the election returns have properly been made out, and fully certified by the officers of said election in the different voting precincts of the city, and that the city council had duly canvassed and said returns, all in accordance with law and the resolution and amendments thereto, calling said runoff election. Number two, that the city council officially finds and determines that the following votes were cast at said runoff election for the following officers by the resident qualified electors of said city who voted at the election. District 1, Brian Kennedy, 2,972 votes; Analisa Cordova-Silverstein, 1,303 votes; District 6, Claudia Lisette Rodriguez, 1,045 votes; Art Fierro, 1,362 votes; District 8, Bettina Olivares, 885 votes; Chris Canales, 1,536 votes. And number three, that in the case of the following offices, the following persons who receive more than a 50% majority of votes cast for candidates for such offices are hereby declared elected to such offices for the ensuing terms or until the election and qualification of their successors, subject to the proper issuance of certificates of election by the presiding officer, and that the number of votes cast for each person who has a candidate for such offices, according to the returns, is shown in paragraph 2 hereof. District Representative number 1, Brian Kennedy; District Representative number 6, Art Fierro; District Representative number 8, Chris Canales. Number four, that on file in the city clerk's office and made a part hereof by reference our copies of the mechanical precinct tabulations of the votes cast at the runoff election for the December 17, 2022 runoff election, to elect the district representatives, districts 1, 6, and 8, showing the number of votes cast in each precinct for each candidate. Number five, that this resolution is adopted subject to the right of any candidate to contest such election in any way provided by law. Number six, that this resolution was acted upon in accordance with the law by the presiding officer, and that the city council, and was deemed by said city council, that upon passage of the resolution, it shall take effect immediately. Number seven, this resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of the city council, and the city clerk shall record the amendment so adopted in the separate book kept in her office for such purpose, adopted this 23rd day of December 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion made by Representative Rodriguez, seconded by Representative Molinar, to approve the resolution. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and the motion passes unanimously. Item number two is discussion and action on an emergency ordinance extending a disaster declaration due to a humanitarian, security, and economic crisis resulting from a mass migration through El Paso.
Move to approve.
Second.
Go ahead, Representative Anello.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if Chief Rodriguez and Chief DeGastino are here to answer some questions. If there's anyone here to answer questions.
Chief Rodriguez.
Sorry, y'all, I didn't see you back there. Y'all, this is the slowest walk ever. No, I'm just kidding.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Chief, thank you. So there's been a lot of concern that I have and that I've heard from the community. And there are first some things that I think that we, I think y'all should be clearing up, right, and some misunderstandings. I know that there has been a conversation going on in the public and by the NGOs about a lot of individuals who have not been processed by CBP, not being allowed to be, or who are, I guess, I don't know what the correct terminology is, so forgive me, but who are essentially not reimbursable by FEMA. And so there are members of the public, and I think some members on the call who are under the impression that the city is not assisting them, because we cannot get reimbursement from FEMA from those individuals. I've spoke to the Congresswoman, I've spoken to many other individuals. I know that's not true, but I want to allow you all the opportunity to kind of clear that up a little bit.
And I think that's important, because I can tell you that I've been every night working with the chief. And last night was a really hard night, as we knew that the weather was going to be five degrees, you know, wind chill factor, and it had been five degrees. And his efforts and the efforts of, I mean, after he gets done, I'll kind of go through some of the things we ended up doing last night. But it was really an incredible job to make sure that we took people off the street. Chief?
Yeah, and I'll start off by talking about the difficulty of getting people off the street. There is a group of individuals who are here in El Paso, and we've seen them stay on the streets. They are, we are trying our best to convince them, we're using faith base, trying to get them to some church shelters where they feel more comfortable, trying to get them into some of the NGOs. It's been an all-out effort. These people have had a long journey just to get to El Paso. They've been abused, taken advantage of, charged fees. They've just had a rough trek, and they do not trust anybody. And you can understand that. And so we cannot force anybody to go where they don't want to go, but we are trying our hardest to help them get off the streets, especially when you have a five-degree wind chill factor. And so we are working as hard as we can. We're assisting the churches. They're asking to, to shelter people. We're assisting with transportation. We're assisting with wraparound services as well. This week, we opened up the convention center. We set it up for an initial of 1,000 people. The reason why we set it up with that floor plan, because we've talked about it, we've talked about 2,000 people, but we set it up with 1,000 because we don't know what the population is yet. We don't know what the mix-up's going to be, is single adult males, single adult females, or family units. So we want to make sure we have separation within the convention center itself, and just so we can expand from there. We've also worked on the two facilities, the two school district facilities. We took possession of the first one today. Teams have been on the scene, on the ground, all day. They've been looking, giving the assessments, making sure that the IT, all the connectivity's up before we go into the next phase where we actually start setting up cots. We're going through, making sure the fire systems work, that all the appropriateness of the facilities are there, that the kitchens are operational. And so we're assisting in that manner as well. From there, we'll be taking possession of the second school the following week. It should be about midweek. We'll be doing the same process there and setting that one up for a shelter as well. All this is in anticipation for when, when or if Title 42 is taken away. As we know, there's a lot of people in Wadis. They're waiting to cross over. We don't know what that flow's going to look like. So we're being proactive. We're setting up as much bed space as we possibly can. That bed space is because right now, as you've seen it, just with our, going into this week, our airport availability was approximately 600 flights a day. And so those are last-minute flights out. As you've seen today, in the last 24 hours, flights around the country have been canceled and delayed. That's only going to increase throughout this weekend. Bless you. With that, that puts that delay, that requires you to shelter more. So by building, that's the reason why we're doing the bed capacity. Even without the weather situation, if we see those thousands a day released right here in El Paso, we're going to need the bed space, just because, as we talked about, our airport, our bus terminals don't have the capacity.
Sure.
Going into this week, we do know that Greyhound was a three-day minimum before you could get a ticket out of town. That had already started, the delays before the even weather. I don't know what it is going into this weekend. I can imagine the bus transports have shut down as well, or are really being canceled or delayed. And so that's going to have a huge impact, too. So that's why we've been focusing on the shelter operations. With that, you know, as we go into this, and we go into the next week, coming days, if Title 42 goes away, that's also going to require that transportation piece, because we know we cannot shelter everyone. And so the key there is to make sure that we can keep people moving, because we will be overwhelmed, will overwhelm the local capacity. We worked with the bishop, Congresswoman's office, last night tirelessly to set up two additional churches. Those churches are trying to convince some of those people on the street to get out of the cold and get to a warm bed.
Sure, and I understand that. We cannot force individuals to go into a shelter, but do we have any safety protocols? Do we have people on the street there to insist, you know, I mean, it's Christmas Eve in a few hours. It's going to be freezing temperatures. If individuals want to choose to stay there, they can, but is there someone there standing by in case someone does need medical assistance?
We, we went, last night, we worked, the crews were on the ground tirelessly late into the evening. So was the bishop, so was the Congresswoman, so was all of our city teams, working to get people off the street. We worked as hard as we could. The Greyhound bus station wasn't letting people into their facility because they closed for a few hours a night. Now they're opening up at 1:00 a.m. So those who are waiting for that early-minute flight, they can at least get into the, into the bus station, or that transport, sorry. They can at least get in the bus. That takes some off the streets. Doing that, and doing all of our continuous efforts to try and gather people, there was still around 50 people in one location and approximately 30 in the other. They did not, they refused to go. We are not forcing anybody to go. So what we did is we put two large Brio buses, one at each location. We said, "Here is warmth. It will not turn a wheel. You're more than welcome to stay in." There was a handful, a dozen people on each bus at both locations, and there was still some that remained in the street by choice.
You know, Chief, one of the things I think's important, Representative Anello's asking, last night, we had a lot of people, and originally they would not leave the streets. We took a bus out there, and 11 of them loaded on the first bus load, and we went ahead and took them to shelters, or wherever we could take them to. And then Bishop Sights and the nuns went out there and started talking to them and trying to convince them that these people are here to help you. They're not here to hurt you. They're not here to take you back and deport you. And we ended up getting another bus load, and then we got some more. We ended up, last night, we could have given up after the first bus load, because no one would get on there, but everybody worked together. We ended up getting 238 people that were taken off the streets last night. And then again, after, we couldn't get anyone else to get on there, the chief went out there and put, like I said, the two buses. We walked away from the buses, so they'd see that, you know, they were safe to get in it. And we put the buses out there to allow them. I know that I, the last time, I think I talked to Bishop Sights last night, was, how do I, 11:30 or so, and he was out there and really was, you know, giving them, you know, and they didn't, they didn't even, they didn't trust him. And it's basically even the media, the news started talking to them, and the news was out there and asking them, "Get off the street. It's going to be cold. This is, these people are here to help you." So it's been an effort that I know it's the county, the city, the Congresswoman, the senator's office, everybody, understanding that right now, we're preparing for the unknown. And the unknown is supposed to happen on the 27th of December, where President Biden has signed with Chief Roberts the agreement that, that would look at pulling back Title 42. So, and that might not happen, but we know that we need to be prepared. But our biggest priority today is to take people off the street, because it's going to be another cold night, and we want to make sure that everybody's treated properly. And we'll continue to go out there and talk to them. I can tell you that I'm out there at midnight talking to them. I'm at the airport. And on Wednesday night, like Chief says, we have 600. We were down to 212 the other night. And so, and I know, and I went down to the border and talked to the Border Patrol, and they've actually moved down a little bit, and still, you know, the numbers actually have gone up in the last couple of days again. So it's, it's a job that we'll continue to do. But Representative Anello, the biggest challenge we have today, and it's a challenge that we'll meet and be successful in, is to take people off the street and give them proper shelter, food, and make sure they're okay.
So with that, if I could just add, those buses I talked about that are on the street for the warming centers. Talking to Ruben at the Enunciation House and the Diocese today, they were able to get more people to get into their shelter system. So hopefully that's even less tonight. Some of those people who chose to stay on the street last night, they actually saw people who sat on the bus all night, and it was a safe place. We're hoping that, that they'll see that, and they'll choose to get in, at least in the bus. And so with that, those buses have not left. They've not left there. We've kept them on the ground. They've been there since midnight last night, and they will be there as long as we need them there, so that people have that option to get out of that cold. We have our roving teams out. You have our fire and police department. If something happens, I mean, it'll follow that process, but at this point, we can't force them. We're just giving everything we can to make sure they have that option to get to a warm spot quickly, if they won't take us up on shelter.
And I don't think that we should be forcing people, but when we say we can't force them, I, that's not necessarily true, correct? Because I think about cities on the East Coast. When it gets to temperatures like this or lower, you know, there are always populations of people who do not want to seek assistance, right? And a lot of those are unhoused individuals. And they will, in freezing temperatures, they will force individuals into shelters for their own safety. And so again, I'm not saying that that's something we should be doing, but I just want clarification on that statement, because I've received that question. And I can't answer that, you know. What, what options do we, like, is that something we can do or we cannot do? And again, just asking for clarification.
Right. And, you know, we could make a decision to, to, to tell people, "We are going to shut down an area. We are going to put a curfew in place," or something to that fact, "and we can pull them from their location." But this is a delicate situation, and we're going to have people that are going to get still afraid if they won't come to a shelter now, with the clergy, with all the helping hands that are out there right now trying to help them. They are going to disperse. They are going to run and hide. And then this problem is going to be spread across the community. And so right now, we're doing the best we can to keep it as organized as we can, so we can gain their trust. That's the best we can do.
Okay, thank you.
And that's part of the emergency declaration, if you look at it, that we do have the option or the opportunity, if we need be, that we do set a curfew, and talked to the chief earlier, that we can set a curfew only on certain segments of the community and not the whole city.
Okay. And so that's a good segue into my questioning about the emergency ordinance. The emergency ordinance is doing two things, to my understanding. It is allowing us to do certain things as a city, and then it is also asking for state assistance. So I would really like to be able to clarify those. What is the emergency ordinance allowing us to do that we wouldn't be able to do? And what specific assistance are we receiving from the state? And yeah, I'll let you answer that before I continue with my comments.
So the emergency ordinance, the one we set up last spring? The emergency declaration?
The declaration that the mayor called, that we are here to reinforce.
So, two different things. The declaration goes further. The ordinance allows us to do the lifts we need to do on a daily basis, but it doesn't get us into the sheltering aspect, the being able to declare the other items or getting those resources. Before I go back to that, I'll talk about the resources we have asked for. We asked for three items, as we talked to you all last week, and in all the correspondence and communications we've been putting out. And that was in the terms of security. There's a lot of people in the streets. It's the holiday season. Kids are out of school. It makes for a congested area. We want to make sure we have enough law enforcement here in town to protect for the what-ifs. It's to protection for the safety of the migrants and the safety of our community just as, just as well. We asked for transportation assistance. As we're seeing today, there's a backlog in flights. They've been shut down. There's a backlog in buses already three days before we got into this weather spike. When you start backlogging and you start filling up your shelters, and every day there's a continuous release, those shelters continue to fill. Even as we're building shelters, we don't want to risk the point of overflow, or we'll be right back where we can't, we don't have any room to bring anybody in. So we asked it in the form of transportation. When we asked for that request, they were in town within, I'd say about 48 hours. They provided four buses to date, is to my, my recollection right now, they provided four buses to date. These are people who chose to go. I believe one was to Chicago, and three were to New York City. The vast majority of people who are passing into the community right now are not looking for transportation. That's not their request, so it's not the same as we saw back in September and October. The thing is, we know that with Title 42 going away, there's a large portion of the population that's waiting in Wadis for that to be lifted. And so they will be in that same, those same unsponsored, no ways, no means to get to where they're going. So we might look into that. So we already asked for that. They already arrived. The security we talked about came in the form of DPS agents. They're actually out helping patrol the downtown area with our metro units. They're helping that in the evenings when it's even more congested. They're not going into the shelter. They're not going into the congregate areas where they're, they're just providing general assistance and visibility. It's not, it's not just the protection because they're here, it's because of the large people we have downtown. We know what our last surge in 2018, 2018, 2019 did to our community. So we're ensuring that we have enough law enforcement here, so if something does go wrong, we have the extra assistance. We all know, police, our sheriff's units, department, staffing is short. Everyone's trying to hire. We're trying to graduate as many as we can, but we want to make sure we have enough resources here now. Our final request was for staffing, general staffing for sheltering, food operations, processing, and general wraparound services when you're into the emergency sheltering. Those requests have been made. We haven't, we haven't utilized any of those requests. I know they moved some people over, but they have not been activated. So they're there for the what-ifs. That's why we put in the requests. But the only two functions we're using of that is the transportation and the security.
So my understanding was the transportation was secured by Cesar Blanco, Senator Cesar Blanco, prior to the mayor calling the declaration. Has additional transportation from the state been provided?
Excuse me?
My understanding is that the transportation that we've been using was, that funding, or those transports specifically were secured by Senator Cesar Blanco prior to the declaration being called. Has there been additional transportation provided since?
Yes.
Okay. And I do have a lot of concern about the idea of security. My understanding is DPS was on art craft the other day, stopping cars at random. Nobody is sure why. Nobody is sure what came out of that. These are the concerns that we had about calling this declaration prior, is concerns I had. I think that, you know, having DPS put in corsetina wire on the border, trying to push people away from the checkpoint, to be seeking asylum, only pushing them to another checkpoint, where we know that Border Patrol has set up a large station at the downtown bridge and pushing them to another, is moving resources. But I do have a lot of concern about what has been happening already. I don't think that we have received from the state what we were told we would receive when calling this declaration. And so my follow-up question, well, I did, I'm sorry, before I get to my last question, I did want you to be able to clarify for the public what it's allowing us as a city to do. And I think there is some ability for us to use different facilities as shelter that we normally wouldn't be able to. And I do think for mine and the public's edification, that would be really important to clarify, that there is a portion of this declaration that does not involve state resources.
So going back to the law enforcement aspect, I'm going to cover that one first. What we've asked for, they're giving. Anything beyond that, anything you see at the border with the concentrating wire, that's, that's the state's own operation. That's not being coordinated to us. That's not what we requested. What we asked for was the extra patrols in the downtown area. We received that.
And I understand that.
Just for clarity, there, those are two different operations.
But the governor, if you talk to people at the state, they're already saying, the governor has been very clear in the last few days, that they would not have come down here and done this if we had not called, called the declaration. And thus, there are repercussions for the decisions that we have made, and we need to be very much aware and honest about that. And I have a lot of concern about what's happening. I'm not saying that not approving the declaration would stop them from doing that, that they would get up and leave. I don't think they would. They're here, and they're going to stay. But I just, I think, you know, those were my concerns. They've happened in real time, and I'm just expressing to you that I still have those concerns, and so thus, I have concerns with continuing.
You know, Chief, one thing, when we're talking about law enforcement, DPS has been patrolling the Lower Valley and the border highway, where there's been a lot of people on the highway. And one of the things we asked them was to make sure the community, and also the asylum seekers were, were safe. And they went out, they started in the last two days, patrolling that area and making sure that people were not running across the freeway. And because it's hard to determine the distance of a car going 70 miles an hour, and we want to make sure that everyone's safe. So they've, they've actually had, have given us that type of assistance in coordination with the El Paso Police Department, also the Sheriff's Department, to how they could work with them to make sure we got that type of assistance.
So reasons for declaring. There's a few bullet points I'll go through, and it's to exercise extraordinary powers, to formally implement our provisions of our emergency plans, to provide additional liability protection to government agencies, special and volunteer emergency workers, to formally request the general assistance from the state and federal, that's, this is the normal process, and to activate our preparedness, response, and recovery aspects of any and all applicable local emergency management plans. The effects of declaring allows us to put the economic stabilization measures in place, such as price gouging, wage, rent controls. It allows us to set curfews. It allows us to commandeer facilities, equipment, or materials. It allows us to control access to a specific geographical area. It allows us to issue time warrants for the payment of cost of equipment, and it allows us to suspend selected codes and ordinances. That's what's allowing us to set up these temporary emergency shelters. The schools, the convention centers are not built or designed for people to sleep in. They're not. Our normal sheltering operations is handled through hotels. As we know, it's the holiday season. Hotels will not keep up with the flow, especially if Title 42 goes away. So with that, that's one of the most important parts there, is that we can keep up all of our plans we've done, everything we've set at the convention center, the forward motion we have on both school properties.
So, and this is a hypothetical question. I'm not posing this at all, but by declaring the declaration, we do not need to be asking for city, for state resources. So in the future, if the council decided, they could direct you to discontinue So in the future, if the council decided, they could direct you to discontinue asking for those, but keep the declaration in place? Totally hypothetical. Yeah, okay. I did say I have one last question. I actually have an additional question, and I want to discuss the schools that we'll be using. I know that the EPISD trustee and through superintendent reached out to me when the school in my district was selected, or before, I think even they had told you all that that was a school they were going to select. And my concern, and I shared this with the city manager, was that the individuals in that area will be very concerned about safety. I know that that has been expressed. I think EPISD did ask for additional security. I have received over, you know, 50 phone calls and emails together, which I guess shows that we know our community as well. But I just wanted to, for, again, public edification, if you could kind of discuss a little bit what that will look like, and how we will be making sure that those neighborhoods will be safe and secure, if you can.
Exactly, and so we're looking.
Mr. Nell Olet, I'll let the, I'll let the chief answer that, but this is Tommy Gonzalez. Chief, you can answer it and elaborate, but I did want to speak, since you mentioned that we talked, right after we talked, I talked to the superintendent of EPISD and also to the chief and to our city attorney to ensure that that was in the agreement, and it is in the agreement, to give the necessary security that they requested. And the chief can elaborate on the wraparound services that we're working on right now to make that more sustainable and make it more long-term.
Yes, so we included the security in that aspect. We've already had the security teams, both fire and police services, out there, giving us evaluations of the facilities, making sure that we're making it as safe as possible for the community at large. We're looking to house family units there. This is a facility that, you know, unlike, you know, we have some shelters in the area that where people stay overnight, and then they exit the day and they traverse around, our shelters are made so they can, so they, once they enter into the shelter system, we're going to take it, we're going to process them, and by process, I mean, where is it you're going, you know, we know they have a means, so we're going to help them facilitate that. We're going to give them the Wi-Fi network, the connectivity that they need, a place to charge their phones or a device, even if they don't have it. We'll have people there to assist them, get their tickets if they need that assistance. And then they're in that shelter. From there, they'll be provided their three meals a day, a nice, safe place to sleep. There'll be some, you know, some wraparound services for their, you know, for the children and everyone else staying in the center, but it's not one where they're going to be traversing in and out of the community. They'll arrive more than likely via bus. They'll be processed in, and they'll be, as they process out, they'll be transported either to the airport or to the bus terminals.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And then my last question is for Mrs. Niemann. I just want to make sure that I remembered the information you gave us at the last council meeting correctly, that council will need to ratify this every seven days?
Every 30.
No, ma'am, this will be ratified. If council passes it today, it'll be in place for 30 days, and then you'll have to re-extend it in 30 days. The mayor's declaration expires in seven days, and then he can issue a new declaration.
Okay. Would it be possible to have this back on the January 3 meeting? Because I'm not comfortable going ahead another 30 days.
So, so the ordinance is by, I believe by charter, 30-day extension. You can certainly have the discussion again on council in terms of the status of the emergency operation.
So it's at least 30 days, but you can bring it forward sooner?
Yes, you can.
Okay, and so I'm asking today if you would be, if it would be possible to do that?
Yes, we could bring it back.
Okay, so I want to support this today. I think that y'all are doing a great job under the circumstances. I want to be very clear. I have absolutely no issue, obviously, what y'all are doing. I'm very proud of the work that you're doing, very impressed. I know that we need assistance. I'm in no way saying that I don't agree with that. But I've already been concerned prior, I'm concerned now, and I just am not comfortable with what could happen in 30 days. So with Mrs. Niemann's assurance that that'll be coming at the next meeting, I will support this today.
Laura, we will need to do a revised agenda posting, since you posted the agenda yesterday or Wednesday.
The agenda deadlines have passed. What would need to happen is the mayor could call a special meeting to place that item for January 3.
And that meeting can be on January 3?
If the mayor calls a special.
Well, I can also do a emergency, state emergency, just like I did for seven days, and it can be renewed every seven days.
Right, but the emergency ordinance, if it is approved today to extend the declaration, will be in place for 30 days, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean.
And one of the things I do want to, you know, there is no easy answer to what we're doing. There are no ifs and buts about it. And as we see what's going on in the federal government and everything we're doing today, it's a Band-Aid on a broken immigration system that has to be fixed by the federal government and really get the UN involved in the country surrounding if we're going to be able to move forward. It's not legislation that'll be able to be done in the US, to be honest with you, in my opinion, that will fix it. And we really believe we need to get the UN involved in the countries around. But right now, what we're doing, it's strictly a Band-Aid on a broken system that needs to be fixed. And there's no easy answer, and, you know, we work day in and day out, and we've been here every day and basically every night, talking about what's the best thing we can do. City manager, the county judge, Betsy Keller, Congresswoman, the state senator Blanco, everybody's really involved. And then EPISD got involved, and until the rent, they're going to charge us for those schools is zero. They wanted to become a partner, and they wanted to become part of the solution for today. So they're not charging us rent to use the two buildings. So the superintendent and the board, you know, voted on giving us that liberty to be able to use those as long as we clean them up, maintain them, and pay the utilities. So I think, I want to thank the superintendent and the board for giving us that opportunity because, like I said earlier, we're preparing today for the unknown. And when I decided to call state emergencies, when we saw that we were averaging 2,500 a day, and the temperature was going to drop, and I can tell you that under no circumstances was I going to jeopardize anyone's safety or anyone's life. So, and that's the reason we did it. Thank you, Representative Mayor Protem.
Thanks. I just wanted to thank you, Chief, for the work that y'all are doing right now. I know it's not easy. It's really, really challenging to see these scenes here and to know that we're trying to provide shelter and support at a time where still some folks are not accepting it. I do want to say that I did see that y'all did have the Sun Metro buses up there as a sort of shelter of last resort, quite literally. I hope more people take advantage of that. And I know that the next couple of days are going to be difficult, as well as the weeks and months ahead, but also gives me a lot of confidence to be able to stand up the convention center, thinking outside the box in terms of the schools, and need to continue to look at ways that we can go and help to protect our community as well, as visitors coming through as well.
Representative Rodriguez?
Thank you. And again, I want to thank you all for your hard work. This isn't an easy task. This isn't a task that you all are accustomed to. We were not trained for this, but it just shows the resiliency of our department, of our teams, that we're able to chameleon our way through all sorts of tragedies, right, and crises. So I really appreciate all the work that you all are doing, not only for the migrants, but for the community of El Paso. I think that I feel comfortable leaving here, knowing that the community is in good hands with the leadership that the city has. So thank you for everything. You know, for me, in my opinion, more importantly than calling on the UN, I think it's more important to call the President of the United States. And I believe that President Joe Biden needs to come to El Paso and needs to see what's going on, and needs to see how this community has came together in all different forms, from the Catholic Church to the school districts to this community, and how we have been able to fix this as much as we could, as, put a Band-Aid on it, like the mayor has said. But it is not our responsibility. But again, I thank you all for doing so, because that's what El Paso does. That's what we do. We step up when we are at our lowest points and moments. So very proud of you all, very grateful that I have been able to work with you all. I feel, again, comfortable that you all are here and with your leadership, and God willing, we will be okay. I really hope that the migrants will understand that we're doing this for their safety, that we need them to be sheltered for their safety, and we don't want to have any more tragedies in our city. We don't want to have people running across our border highway and our freeways, getting run over and killing, and being killed. So it is important that we do have that assistance here to have that extra public safety. It is for public safety. That is our responsibility as an organization in the city of El Paso. Public safety is number one. So thank you again, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Representative Rodriguez. Representative Molinar?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief De Agostino, Chief Rodriguez, thank you very much for being here. Thank you for all of your team, the hard work you've been doing. I know there's an operation in plans, and it's a fluid operation. Having been in the police department, I know what you're dealing with to a point. Didn't ever deal with like this with migrants at all. However, people need to understand that you must have a plan in place. You must have a plan B, just in case something happens, something doesn't go right. And this is fluid. We're already, how many months into this? And things are happening and things are not happening, the weather, just like we said, the school district, they took the lead and said, hey, let's work with our city of El Paso. So we thank them for well, the Catholic Diocese of El Paso as well, and all the other churches that are helping as well. We need to, we need help. It's not just the city alone, the county, the state, and everybody else. And I applaud you for your work. It's not going to end tonight. It's going to continue. And so, I wanted to know if you have been reached out, our office has been receiving different calls. If you go on US 54 across from Mesquite, do you know what the, exactly, is going to have the plans there, if you can share that with us?
So, I do know that Border Patrol's putting up a soft-sided structure, that is to add additional capacity. As we know, their CPC, their Central Processing Center, has a capacity of 1,040, so 1040. We know that their breaking point is 5,000. Right now, they're at a comfortable number, actually. They've been able to keep, maintain that through our daily releases here in El Paso, but they've been able to maintain it with this surge. They know that they will not be able to hold it. It's going back to where we were at a week ago, when we were seeing the high releases of 1,700 a day into our community. And so they're building up a soft-sided structure. Those are for people who are still being processed, so they're in federal custody. It's just another place to house while they're doing processing. So they're expanding their footprint, so they could, they have a safe environment for people to stay.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Chief, thank you very much.
And to your comments, I know that we've talked about this, and the chief and I and all the partners right now, that we really believe that the, it's still going to get worse before it even gets better. And that's what we're preparing for, and that's what I call the unknown. Representative Zivetta? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Rodriguez and De Agostino, thanks again. My colleagues have pretty much summed up what you all have been doing out in the streets during this cold weather. You've been out there yourselves. Again, just like Rep. Molinar said, having been through the police department, we know how you're feeling, and how it can be aggravating at times, how it can be disappointing. But you're coming through with flying colors. On behalf of my constituents on District 7, along the border highway, they want to thank you. They feel somewhat secure now, as from the previous time before. And so, my question to you is, I've got two questions in particular, is what is the time weight, or the turnover, for those that are set to go to a different location?
That's the variable we're at right now. So looking with flights being canceled, what, 600 a day availability we have right there is going to be drastically reduced, so that makes for longer stays. You know, it's the holiday season. It's already a reduced flow, knowing that Greyhound is three days out, and then you add this cold weather on top of that. So that extends. That's the unknown variables that you have to deal with. We're thinking long-term. We're thinking without the weather obstacles, without the holiday season being here, because it's passing us. And at that point, we know that our transportation system still won't keep up. So that's why we put the ask in for state assistance. That's why our model looks at also doing transporting. That's why Chief Rodriguez and the Office of Emergency Management's working closest, closely with other offices of emergency management, such as Dallas, Denver, Houston, Austin, and is to build that rapport. Those teams are getting ready, they're getting prepared. So this way, if we're scheduling peoples, as people are securing their travel, we tell them, we'll secure your travel out of Denver. And then so we'll charter buses, so they can get them from here to there, just to make sure that the traffic capacity can keep up. As far as thanking us for what we're doing, I want to take a quick second, and I want to thank the crews who've been on the ground. It's been some cold days, it's been some long days. Sun Metro, we had a driver on there who went numerous hours last night.
Sure, and.
And those people are really, I feel for them. I mean, they're doing it, they're doing a great job. They have a passion for what they're doing. But what I feel is the weight that they feel, because they couldn't convince everyone they get off the street. So I'm not saying anything, I just want to recognize them for the great job they're
True, and that's true. And you know what, I think we have, the council, there's no doubt about, the staff is, the staff has been doing the utmost possible, impossible work that they've been doing. Yes, we were out there, just like the mayor, my wife and I were out, checking out the area, and your roving teams were out there, and the cleanup crews were out there, by the bus people, just like you said. So what you're, how you're coming across is you're telling what is happening in real time here, and what's going on. My other question to you, with the influx possibly being lifted on the 27th, have we heard, and I know this was brought up on a previous council, Mary, is have we heard from Fort Bliss, are they going to help us out when the numbers get higher? Or what's the status between Fort Bliss and the city of El Paso?
And that's been a request, has been a request made by the Congresswoman, and at this point, they still have not granted us, you know, access to that. And that's why we're moving, as the plan that you see, when the Red Cross came on Sunday, and we met with them, they had, they brought 10,000 cots, and they're setting them up at the schools, at the civic center. The civic center, they put out 1,000 on Wednesday night, and with the capacity of another 1,000 that are prepared to do. And in the schools, each school will be able to have minimum of 1,500 in each school. And then we'll continue, and then working with the NGOs and working with the dioceses, we believe, and the help from the Red Cross, they've committed to us to be here to supply food, medical, and clothing, and blankets through December 30, I mean, January 31st.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll continue, because that is, you know, when the refugees came from Afghanistan, that was a great facility, and we understand that, and we're trying to get the same thing that was going on there. But one of the things that did tell us is the Congresswoman, what's the Congresswoman? I don't remember. Someone told us that there'd been quite a few deployments at Fort Bliss at this time, and that changes a little bit of what the can and cannot do on federal land.
Yeah, but they've housed there before, so, I mean, that would certainly, that would certainly help our community out here, and.
It's not an ask that we haven't asked repeatedly.
But thank you so much for what you've been doing, you and your staff, and the city as a whole has been accommodating, and yet, I too feel like, you know, Rep. Nello, I fully understand that, that, I too feel like Rep. Nello, that those that are staying out there should somehow be convinced, but I understand also that we cannot force them. I truly do that, I understand that. So keep doing what you're doing, sir, and hopefully we can get them all inside. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I think last night was a great step forward of them being able to trust us and come in, and like I said, the original bus had 11 people on it, and at the end of the night, we were able to get sheltered for 238, so.
That was, that was the last thing. Thank you. That was a great idea there, right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Rodriguez? I mean, Salcedo?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Chief Agostino and Chief Rodriguez. I've been in endless calls late night with you all, and you all are putting so much work into this, and so I just want to thank you all, the staff. Also thank the mayor for calling the emergency disaster declaration that was much needed. Public safety is our priority for the community. That was the biggest issue, so I know that's being addressed. I know in that, we're also addressing shelter, feeding, and just getting, doing the best we can with what you call the broken system. Needs to be handled up in comprehensive immigration reform needs to be taken up federally. But I think more importantly, I do, I do think that Biden needs to come out here in El Paso and, and see what it is to work and be living here in this border community and for him to know the needs. And, and we're just trying to put the best processes in place with a broken immigration system. So you all doing a great job, continue to do that. And, and you all have this, this council. I'm here to support all the efforts and we're going to continue to do the, keep the migrants safe and also keep our communities safe. And thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Representative Celso. And I think with everything that's going on, I think it's important to mention that El Paso is still one of the safest cities in America. With that, Ms. Prime, we have a motion in a second.
Mayor, I've, I've got one more question for the chief or for you, if you can answer it. I know I've had people call the office in wanting to volunteer. Are people being taken in for volunteers or work or no?
So, Julio Rodriguez, Emergency Management Coordinator for Office of Emergency Management. So thank you for your question. So we, we have a lot of partners on the ground. Red Cross, of course, is assisting. So we're asking anyone that wants to volunteer that they become affiliated with the Red Cross. That way they can go through their process and then they can be utilized. I know that there's local El Pasoans that have and are currently working within the convention center. The Red Cross did bring 80 to 90 folks from out of town, but I know we have a segment of El Pasoans that are assisting there. So they can join our forces essentially to help us during, during this period. Also, they can volunteer at the Salvation Army with a food bank. There's other NGOs that are, that are in need of assistance as well. So time more than anything and really it's all, and all hands on deck, so, but that's our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a number for the Red Cross?
We will, we'll, we'll put a package together of-
All right, thank you.
Different organizations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again, sir.
Is there public comment?
Yes, we have nine members of the public.
Before you respond, just Laura Cruz, the Costa Communications Director for the City of El Paso, just to answer your question, sir. On our website for the City of El Paso, if you go to the City of El Paso website, we have a migrant information there listed. There's also a donation section. That donation section lists a variety of different agencies to include the Red Cross and Paso Norte Health, Paso Norte Community Foundation, which recently launched their own efforts, which also combines all of the agencies.
Thank you. With that, Ms. Prime?
Yes, Mayor, we do have 10 members of the public that signed up to speak.
And I'm sorry, can, one more point that I just want to stress, I apologize, Laura. One more point that I want to stress is that we are not taking physical donations at the convention center. So we'll actually ask the community to please not take any items to the convention center. Please visit the website. At those agencies, they'll be able to provide additional information.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to try this one more time, Ms. Prime.
Yes, sir. The first person is Emmanuel Torres. Emmanuel Torres will be followed by Fernando Garcia, Samantha Singleton, Commissioner David Stout, Ivan Diaz, Carla Palacios. Emmanuel Torres. Fernando Garcia. If you're in the queue, star six to unmute your telephone. Fernando Garcia. Star six, please, to unmute your telephone. I don't see Mr. Garcia's phone number in the queue. We'll move on to Samantha Singleton. Samantha Singleton, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Good evening, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good, good evening, everyone. I'll be speaking on behalf of Fernando Garcia and the Border Network for Human Rights. So one of the things that I wanted to say really quickly is, I don't think the question was ever answered regarding the city and the FEMA affiliation. That has been one of the biggest issues that we've been hearing out in the community. We do have B and H R members on the ground that was out there last night as well assisting with individuals to help get migrants on the, the buses to get to shelter. You know, their concern is because they're not processed or they're unprocessed, I'm not sure of the correct terminology, that they will, they're in fear that they're going to be deported. So they don't want to receive any, any shelter. So what can the city do about that? Your warning stations are only open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Can those hours be extended? I understand that you have some buses out there and that's great, but what more can you do? We understand the city has a surplus. What resources or funds can the city dip into to assist in this? We understand that Title 42 may end next week, but right now we're talking about tonight. We're talking about temperatures that will be freezing. And I've heard several individuals talk about because of the weather conditions, we want to ensure that people are safe and no, you can't force anyone's hand, but 80 people is, is 80 people too many to still be out there. So what more can we do? What can we do as an organization, as an NGO to help in this humanitarian crisis? What more can we assist than we have already collected winter jackets and we passed out almost 100 winter jackets? In addition to assisting with getting these individuals out there, what about facilities that you all are not using that belong to the city, that maybe have nothing to do with the federal government? Is that something that can be opened up for these individuals to sleep in? So those are the, my main comments regarding this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Commissioner David Stout. Good evening. Star six, please, to unmute your telephone.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Happy holidays to you all. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. As elected officials, I believe that we must be united and collaborate at the highest level as we help with the humanitarian crisis in which we find ourselves. And especially at this point in time, we must ensure that people are not subject to the freezing weather that we are experiencing. And as has been discussed in this, this evening, our overriding goal in the next few days must be to avoid the deaths and any deaths and injury that people may come across not having a place to stay warm. And that applies not only to all migrants, but to unhoused people. And, and so I want to, I want to stress continued and increased collaboration and communication is going to be the key for that. And I also want to say I can't express enough gratitude to the organizations in our community who are doing this work despite the disgusting threats from our state to criminalize their humanitarian missions. I am in full support of our El Paso NGO's efforts as we all should be. Along those lines, I'm also very concerned about the effect that the militarization of our border and bringing Operation Lone Star to El Paso has and will continue to have on those efforts. That said, I respectfully ask that, that we continue to, our collaborative efforts to support the work of sheltering and trans, and transporting migrants, to unite them with their sponsors or NGOs in other cities that are ready to host them, making sure that these efforts are coordinated at the highest level possible again. I think we should push back against the militarization of our area as well as against political toys to make the work of supporting migrants more difficult for those in the community who are doing that work. I applaud Representative Nello for asking for clarification regarding what exactly the city or, or our community is receiving from the state as a result of the disaster declaration. I had the same question and now understand that we have not really received much other than militarization and DPS harassing people on the West Side apparently. This, in my opinion, is not beneficial and only has served as a play in the governor's political game. And that said, I ask that you communicate, communicate in writing and give specific accounting of what specific benefits toward the goal of sheltering and transporting and feeding migrants the city of El Paso is receiving due to the emergency declaration that we otherwise would not have received. It sounds like you all are going to continue with the disaster declaration and I hope that in doing that, you also push the state government to come through with true and meaningful assistance with things like food, shelter and coordinated transportation. And I am here happy to support you and back you up in any way I can.
Thank you, sir.
I also want to thank you very much for your work helping people shelter against the difficult, especially at night. I'm grateful for the work that we're doing together.
Thank you, sir.
And I also want to you, as suggested by Rep. Nello, in the new year to evaluate the situation. Have a very happy holiday. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Ivan Diaz.
Pardon me?
The next speaker is Ivan Diaz. Ivan Diaz, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Good evening, you have three minutes.
Hi, how are you all today? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Well, hope you all having a good night, like on a Friday, almost like Christmas Eve. I know this is not something that our city or anyone, like especially us working in nonprofit organizations and in the community, we were expecting. But I think in El Paso, we once again show how we are united as a community and how we show up for each other. So thank you again, everyone that has been volunteering, that has been putting the time, that has been out there with the human beings that are in our city. So I think that there's a lot of still like confusion, what will be the benefits or what are really the benefits of declaring El Paso a disaster zone or like having militarization on the border? I think what I've been hearing is more talks about the security and keeping public safety. But it really sounds more like a fear for what the migrants are here or it sounds more that you all want to do more border security, but it's, and I hear that it's a humanitarian crisis, but it sounds more that there's more fear about the border. And I think that a lot of the time talk that, you know, certain political affiliations impose. So I really think that that's not what we are here for because I still haven't heard that what, that FEMA has been helping, but I don't know if like we are also taking into consideration people that have not been processed. So they cannot access any federal resources. And those are the people that have been left behind. I was yesterday there like more past than 11:00 PM and I was having a lot of conversations with a lot of the migrants. So I think it's really important that we get to know like the people. So if members of the city council, Mayor Lither, if you have not been out there, I think it's really important that we have these conversations with the people that we are serving because it is part of the responsibility as human beings. It's part of us, on us to respond humanely as well. And I think more militarization in the border is just going to create more fear. And I believe that the people protecting the streets, like the police have been out there with their best intentions. I have witnessed that myself. And I think the same way that they're, they're out there with their best intentions, there's also migrants here with their best intentions that they're only trying to make a better life for themselves. They're not trying to get in trouble because it was so hard for them to come here, for them to have problems.
Thank you. You've reached the three minute limit.
Thank you for your time and we appreciate everything that you all do.
The next speaker is Carla Palacios. Carla Palacios, star six, to unmute your telephone. Carla Palacios, star six. I don't see Ms. Palacios' phone number in the queue. The next speaker is Wesley Lawrence, followed by Ana Reza, Michael Grady, Irma Cruz. Good evening, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor.
How are you?
I come here today as someone who is deeply disturbed by the rhetoric that I've seen in our community, for those who are coming here for better life and better opportunity. I come here asking you to please demilitarize our US border. It is unacceptable and it is a violation of human rights, but it's also a violation of what makes El Paso special. All of us here in El Paso come from a migrant background, no matter your, where you're from, whether you're from Germany or Mexico or wherever that may be. And it's, it's time that we start honoring that. As city reps, I challenge you to tackle the hateful rhetoric that is on Nextdoor and that is in our community. These are people that's lives matters. These are people that need help. And we need to be honest, these are people that are coming here because for decades, the United States government has destabilized these countries, whether politically or economically or socially. These are people that are, that have, for the last four years have been told time and time again through xenophobic rhetoric that they cannot come to America. We need to address that. As a city, we can do better and I'm glad of the work that we are doing, but we do need to accept that we can do better equipping people with, with blankets. If they don't want to leave where they're at, we can still give them blankets. We can still allow them to shelter in place. We can stop by taking away their shelters. We can stop stealing their tarps. We can stop stealing their blankets and we can ensure that these people, that they do not feel comfortable coming with us because we are strangers. They don't know us. But if we can give them the comfort that they deserve, the dignity that they deserve and the love and compassion that El Paso is all about, we can better the situation. We also have to understand that this is not a migrant crisis. This is a humanitarian crisis. And we, as El Pasoans, if President Biden does not want to come down to El Paso, we need to go to Washington. We need to talk to everyone possible to get them to understand what's going on. We know here in El Paso, this is not the first time we've had a humanitarian crisis and it surely will not be the last until Democrats and Republicans come together to pass meaningful immigration reform at the federal level. We, we also need to ensure that when we do go to Washington, we talk to them about the two, the millions of, of people that are here undocumented that also deserve justice, that also deserve to feel safe in our communities. We as a city can, can really be loud, but it, but we also have to take to task Governor Abbott and ensure that our community is not being used as a political prop for a future presidential campaign, nor is it being used to push hateful, harmful rhetoric on people that are different than we are. So I challenge you with that and I look forward to working with you in that capacity because as an elected official myself, representing SD 29, this, this issue does not just affect El Paso, it affects everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ana Reza. Ana Reza, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Ana Reza, good evening, you have three minutes.
Yes, hello, good evening. My name is Ana Reza and I'm a community activist. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for your hard work to bring people out of the streets. And I think the city closed their city shelter now preventing a lot of support and relief for while we have started seeing slowly street releases and now we're at this level. Of course, this is beyond that. This is another big issue of the reality of what's happening in our, in our fronteras. But what we need to, when we talk about the priority, it looks like you all are going to pass this, what we're hearing is the militarization and cops that are at these sites. Because we're talking about, I know that they're doing work, they're trying to get people moving, but I think the presence, the lives of like three or four cops is not a very healthy thing for our community. Because remember, the first experience they, these community members had in the US has been horrible. They were in detention centers with the light that never turned off. They were sleeping on floor. It was really cold. They took showers. At 2:30 in the morning, they were waking up. They were there for eight to 10 days, some of them. They were threatened to be separated by their children, threatened by giving more hours. So what we need to provide is a very welcoming process. And I think we failed that at the beginning and we fail it every time. And I need to, we need to start preparing ourselves for the future in our budget. This is a reality that's going to be happening from now on. So we need to prepare ourselves to be loving, caring, supporting people. And I feel like the big part that you're going to ask is would be staff, not security. I think staff to help run the shelters, staff to go talk to people, to give out information about the risk of being in the streets, the, the dangers surround them, being, you know, by chioptries, by harassers and that. They're still in the street. We know the reality of that. So we should be giving out those kind of, in case that staff can do that. Also communicating to our community of the, the beauty of migrants in our community and how we can, let's celebrate that, let's make it something that is beautiful. So we need staff for good, healthy meals, for showers, a warm one, food for clothing, for compassion to where they are coming from and where they're going. And support and love, but no militarization. So please keep that in mind as you're looking at this. Right now, I think the biggest support, you know, where the people are still at, they're at 3:00 PM, it's still a sacred heart and it's very dangerous. But people go, I would suggest there's a lot of help needed. We need a lot of helpers. Please don't continue that damage militarization of that forceful hand of-
Thank you, you've reached the three minute limit. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Michael Grady. Michael Grady, star six, to unmute your telephone. Michael Grady, star six, please. I don't see Mr. Grady's phone number in the queue. Irma Cruz, star six. Irma Cruz, star six, to unmute your telephone. I don't see Ms. Cruz's phone number in the queue either. Veronica Carvajal submitted a statement that she would like Representative Nello to read.
Thank you, Ms. Prime.
Thank you, Ms. Prime. Statement from Veronica Carvajal. I do not support extending the emergency declaration unless the following occurs. One, that the city and the county coordinate efforts to help migrant populations. Two, that the city explains how the declaration has resulted in voluntary assistance from the state. It seems the declaration only resulted in the state sending the National Guard to scare the migrants from reaching CBP agents, and now many of them have crossed without declaring their asylum claim immediately. This has an immediate impact as people cannot stay at the city shelters without their CBP issued documents. Three, the city accounts for how it was, the city accounts for how it will spend the money it has received thus far and explains why the county didn't have the same issues with the reimbursements from FEMA. Four, coordinates better with the shelters and provides transportation for migrants turned away at the city-run facilities. Five, the city has a plan for ensuring migrants are not sleeping outside in deadly weather. I request that each council member, the mayor, city manager, city attorney, and every top administrator at the office volunteer at least one hour of their time at one of the shelters or churches to help the migrants directly. Thank you, Veronica Carvajal.
Thank you, Representative Nello.
The final speaker is Peggy Hinkle. Peggy Hinkle, star six, to unmute your telephone. Peggy Hinkle, star six. I don't see that phone number in the queue either. Mayor, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone that came and spoke on this. While we were talking, I got a letter sent to me that, and I think Chief Augustino got the same one, that we will be receiving between the city and the county, an additional $7 million from FEMA. And the way it, they're breaking it out, which is, again, to help us continue with, what we're doing right now, the amount will be 2.69 million to the county and 4.39 million to the city, in addition to the upfront money we've already been given and allocated. And this is part of the $79 million that FEMA has for the first quarter. Thank you. With that, can we take the vote, Ms. Prime?
Mayor, I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if Chief Augustino is here, but I know that, that we've set up these shelters so far. Is, is there any other, other public entities like the county that currently have shelters open during this time?
Oh, yeah, there's quite a, quite a few additional
I just try to understand other, other entities. I know that the school district's working with us.
So your question is specifically for sheltering?
Yeah.
For which other ones are
Overnight sheltering.
So we have our NGOs, enunciation house facility, our churches, we have our, our Opportunity Center, our rescue mission, we have the, the convention center, the schools we're working on. The county has a processing, a welcoming center of their own. It's not housing, it's creating those connections
That's still about five o'clock at night?
Yes.
The county's welcoming center, okay. And then, and then just in terms of coordination, OEM is, is comprised of members of both the city and the counties, first responders, can you just help to clarify that again?
It is the City-City Office of Emergency Management.
So it's a joint city-county?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make clear that because it seems like there's questions about coordination. So to the extent that we can do anything with, with tonight in terms of encouraging people to get on those buses just to stay overnight or anything like that, I think it's really important, really doesn't make a difference at this point, whether it's the city, the county, the school districts,
That's it, we're all working together.
Federal government, whoever it is, we're all trying to work together here. And I think it's important to understand that, that those are important questions to ask at the end of the day, but we really need to be looking beyond what, what office we're in and what we can do to help, help these human beings that are here in our community.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. With that, Ms. Prime?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Rivera, seconded by Representative Rodriguez to approve the emergency ordinance. On that motion, call for the vote. Mayor, do you consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. End the voting session and the motion passes unanimously with the mayor's consent.
Thank you, council. Again, Representative Rodriguez, thank you again for your service. And Mayor Protem, I did not announce that, congratulations on your wedding on Saturday.
Thank you.
And also, I know that Argentina won the World Cup. So congratulations.
Both of those things are very important and both of them are on the same day, so.
Mr. Tatiana.
Thank you again and everybody, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and may God bless everyone.
Motion to adjourn?
Godspeed, Representative Rivera.
There's a motion in a second to adjourn the special meeting, all in favor? Anyone opposed? And the special city council meeting for Friday, December 23rd, 2022 is adjourned at 7:22 PM. Thank you, council.